All right, take a seat. Waiting for our audio visual technician to tell me it's okay, it's all right? Okay. Well, first of all, I would like to welcome everyone here to be able to be the first town hall meeting with Congressman Gary Palmer. Gary and I, Ray and Ethan, went to lunch about two to three weeks ago. Gary has an affinity for barbecue, so we went to the Golden Rule. We had an opportunity to be able to sit there and just to be able to chat and, you know, talk about what's going on in Washington, what's going on in Irondale. And Gary is our representative, so I want to make sure that the city of Irondale has a good relationship with everyone from the federal level, from the state level, as well as the county level. So I would say that this town hall meeting is the beginning of having many town hall meetings with the elected officials that represent the city of Irondale. As I said, we want to be holistic, connected, and comprehensive in our approach to doing government, and the only way that we can do that is to be able to know the individuals that actually represent us. We open up all of our meetings in a word of prayer. I don't think we have to do anything differently tonight, but we are going to do that, so I will open this up in a word of prayer. And then I will turn it over to Ray Malik, who will come, and he will share the staff that's a part of Gary, Congressman Palmer's team. But also, before I would do that, I would be remiss if I did not thank the councilors here for the city of Irondale that are in attendance. We have Councilman Box, Councilman Sands, Councilperson Quayar, and also Councilman London. So we have eighty percent of our governing body that is here tonight. So if you'll bow your heads, I'll open this up in a word of prayer. Oh gracious God, we thank you for this wonderful opportunity to have a chance to be able to hear what's going on in our region, for we realize that you are the one who created government, and we want to be able to honor you by being good stewards of the things that you've given to each and every one of us. For I hope that the conversations that we have tonight, that they're enlightening, which means that our ears should be open, our eyes should allow us to be able to see and to be able to hear and to know how we can be able to help this great city as well as this country move forward. We ask that your spirit move and abide in each individual that is here, that we have a lively debate, but we are respectful of each and every opinion that is spoken tonight. For these things, we offer up in your wonderful son's name, amen. And I'll turn it over to Ray.
Thank you. We do, I want to appreciate the mayor and the city of Irondale for having us here. My name is Ray Malik, I'm the district director for Congressman Palmer. Our staff, Ethan Weiss back here that the mayor mentioned is our deputy, my deputy district director. Virginia Amison next to him works with us, handles special events, our quarterly mayor's lunches we do. If you've got kids looking for military academy appointments, she coordinates that process for us. Art competition is a big deal. We have a monthly breakfast during the school year for college kids. It's a leadership program that Gary started back when he was first elected that we do on the campus at Sanford, have students from Alabama and U A B and Birmingham Southern that come to that. She coordinates all those special events. And then Denise Weaver back here that you saw when you came in is our director of constituent services. She's the one that can help you if you've got an issue with a federal agency, federal, not state, and some others we get calls about sometimes, but she really is good at helping navigate when there are problems with a VA or maybe a social security or an issue like that. So we're here in our local office to serve you and do that. Congressman Palmer was the first elected in 2014, the first office he'd ever run for, had never run for political office before. He has been on the Budget Committee on Government Oversight Reform, on Transportation Infrastructure. He is currently the chair of the Republican Policy Committee, which puts him fifth or fourth in leadership. And really, when you think of how short of a time he's been there to already be elevated to position of leadership, he won't say this, I will, I'm proud of him, I think recognizes just the stature that he has among the other Republicans in the House of Representatives. He's also on Energy and Commerce Committee and on the Committee on Climate Change. That's not the right name for it. Climate Crisis. So with that, what we'll do is Gary will talk ten or fifteen minutes, but really we want to hear from you, we'll open that up to questions at that point, and we'll wrap it up in a little bit of time. Please, if you don't mind, welcome up Congressman Gary Palmer.
I'm gonna lord, try to lord this well, I think I'll leave it like it is for normal people, normal life. But I appreciate Mayor Stewart, I really enjoyed that lunch with you, I really enjoyed the barbecue too. I tell people, if you want to get good barbecue in Washington, you'll bring it with you. I'm gonna head on a couple of things and then open it up for questions. Obviously, the big issue right now is what's going on in Afghanistan. And I don't care what political party you're in, what your affiliation is, this is going to go down as a tragic mark in American history. And I'm very concerned about the number of Americans and other foreign people who are in Afghanistan that can't get to the airport. I know the Biden administration wants to wrap this up in the next couple of weeks. I'm not sure we can get everybody out in the next couple of weeks, and the press conference they had today didn't give me assurances that they're committed to getting every American out of Afghanistan, and they're not just in Kabul, they're in Kandahar, they're in Herat, they're in different places around the country. And the Taliban has complete control of the country. We're sending in another four thousand troops to help the two thousand who are still there. My understanding is that we secured the Bagram airbase today, but securing the airbase does not mean that they've opened up avenues for people to be able to get from wherever they are to that point. The other big concern that I have is how the rest of the world, and particularly our allies, are going to look at us, because we gave promises to those people who helped us, the interpreters, the people who served in the Afghan military. And it was stated yesterday that they wouldn't fight. That is not true. Somewhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand Afghan soldiers have lost their lives fighting alongside or under the direction of American troops. In this month alone, I think, or it was last month, there were over two thousand lost their lives fighting the Taliban trying to prevent the takeover of these various provinces and now the capital city. So that is a misrepresentation of these guys. We know now, and it's been verified, that the Taliban is already going door to door. And if these people were part of the Afghan Special Forces, they're shooting them in the street. We also know that they're going door to door and identifying families who have family members who are in the United States who had supported the US effort in Afghanistan. And they've sending messages to these people in the United States that they're holding family members hostage in Afghanistan, and if they do not return and face justice, I guess justice as defined by the Taliban, they're gonna kill their family. We got a call yesterday, I had a town hall in Clanton last night, and right before the town hall, I was still in my truck on the phone with a guy from Houston who is working with a guy who was an interpreter. He has seven kids. His wife and his six-year-old daughter went back to Afghanistan a couple of months ago to be with her mother, who's very ill, and I don't know that we can get her back. So I'm concerned that in the future, when we need to form alliances with people to fight a war or to engage in a military operation, that people are not gonna trust us, that we didn't keep our work. And my biggest concern is that for the next few months, there's gonna be a lot of bloodshed in Afghanistan. So that's what's occupied my attention for the last couple of days, and will continue to occupy my attention until we can bring this to a satisfactory resolution. In terms of issues that are relevant here, Democrat David Tron, Congressman David Tron from Maryland, and I have introduced a bill that, and I've talked to Mayor Stewart, I've talked to all the mayors about this, that we need to finish the Northern Belt Line. It is absolutely critical for the future of Birmingham on a number of levels. One, economic development and opportunity, it will create a tremendous number of jobs. And if we do this right, and we have an opportunity here, unlike Atlanta and Nashville and some of these cities that have grown so rapidly, they've outgrown their infrastructure and it's diminished their quality of life. We have an opportunity, if we do this right, to build what we need twenty-five years from now, that includes the water systems, that includes the service highways that can connect, and we talked a little bit about this, that will connect to the commercial development, the retail development, residential, and I think we have tremendous potential to create a high-tech corridor between Huntsville and Birmingham. The Space Lock System for the moon mission is being built in Decatur. So there is an opportunity for U A B and Southern Research to connect with Hudson Alpha and Huntsville and the aerospace and defense industry, and for us to create some of the most beautiful office facilities in the country because of the spectacular landscape. Now, most of, I've worked for two engineering companies, and a lot of my colleagues in civil engineering would describe it as spectacular, they would describe it as very difficult for development. But I think that's one of the things that we have here in Birmingham. I have so many people come to Birmingham, and I think that Alabama's just flat and with a handful of paved roads, and they get here and they see the mountains and the beauty of this area that I think will help us attract a lot of people who will want to come here not only to start a business or build a business, but to raise a family. This is a great place to be, and we've got great opportunities. So what Congressman Tron and I have done is we've introduced a bill, the sponsors in the Senate are Joe Manchin, Rob Portman from Ohio, and Bob Casey from Pennsylvania, that will start to close out the Appalachian Development Highway System. The Appalachian Regional Development is something that started back in the fifties, and ten of the states that are part of that have not completed all the sections of the Appalachian Highway System. The one section in Alabama that's not complete is the Northern Belt Line. It was approved in nineteen eighty-nine, y'all. I think I've met a couple of people in here tonight that weren't even born in nineteen eighty-nine. We're one of the largest cities in the United States that does not have a complete belt line. It also, if we do this the right way, it will be a tremendous help to us in reducing the amount of congestion we have in the city. Texas A&amp;M has a program where they're studying traffic patterns in four hundred and ninety-four US cities. They're getting data every fifteen minutes, and they're looking at congestion. Birmingham ranks fifty-six, okay, out of four hundred and ninety-four. So we're almost in the top ten percent for congestion. If we, the way you reduce congestion is you expand your existing facilities, your infrastructure, and you build new ones. Right now, on a daily basis, there are eighteen thousand semi trucks go through downtown Birmingham. So when you have that kind of traffic, that kind of congestion, there's a cost for that, and it comes out of your pockets. If you're sitting in congested traffic, you're burning excess fuel. And the estimate from Texas A&amp;M is that in Birmingham alone, it's over nine million gallons. Well, when I saw that, I said, there's another issue with this, it's not just burning excess fuel, it's all the emissions that come from that. And so I've asked the staff director for the Select Committee on Climate Crisis to give us a calculation on what that means in emissions, because you've got a lot of people that live in the inner city of Birmingham that are subject to whatever ramifications might come from that type of congestion. So I think this, if we can get the Northern Belt Line started and get it completed, it's gonna be a tremendous advantage for the city of Birmingham and the entire central Alabama region. It's gonna be great for Portland, for Irondale, for Alabot County, West Jefferson. And you get out to West Jefferson, how many of you have ever been out to Birmingham port? It is one of the most underutilized infrastructure assets the state has. And as we move farther and farther away from coal, that port will basically become dormant. We have an opportunity, and I've talked to Jefferson County Commissioners, Joe Knight, being one of them, just had breakfast with him, was that Friday? To talk about this is to plan where we want to place these different research parks or high-tech or retail, but also manufacturing and warehousing. And if we do this right, we can bring light manufacturing in, and you better utilize our rail system, we've got two modern intermodals, which is for our city our size, for a region our size, metropolitan area, is very significant. Our rail service will reach seventy-eight percent of the United States in two days. So if we could enhance Birmingham port and turn it into a broader access for shipping products to the port of Mobile, I think we could really do something with that. Plus, I think having access to the river off of four fifty-nine, the Northern Belt Line, would enhance the river in terms of entertainment and outdoor activities. And the plan that's been laid out enhances the environmental advantages that we have here too. So if this bill passes, all of the money that's appropriated will have to go to this project, because it's only for the Appalachian Development Highway System, and this is the last section, as I said. And if it were to pass, it'd be over three hundred and sixty million dollars over five years. And the entire delegation has been involved in this, it's been a team effort. Senator Shelby's been terrific in particular, because he is the ranking member on the Appropriations Committee in the Senate. We had already gotten sixty million dollars that's set aside for this, so we're talking over four hundred million to get this project going. And I think it could be huge for central Alabama. The bill that we've introduced has been rolled into this one point two trillion package. I don't know if we can get it up. Majority Leader for the Democrats, Steny Horringer, thinks that we'll vote Tuesday. That was the information I got this afternoon. Later this afternoon, I got some other information that indicates that there's some infighting among the Democrats, and we might not get it up, but I'm going back Monday, we'll see what happens. Some of the things that concern me right now is our debt. Our debt is right now two percent bigger than our entire economy, and it's caused rampant inflation, where inflation right now across the board is at six point four percent, but inflation on energy is up over twenty-five percent. And that really impacts low-income people. I grew up in Hackleburg, Alabama, pretty much dirt poor. My daddy had an eighth-grade education, if you had that much, he was a logger, had a truck and a pair of mules and a chainsaw, and that's what I grew up doing. We heated our house with a cold heater that sat in the kitchen and cooled it with a box fan that sat in the kitchen window. And in the wintertime, my brother and I shared a bed, we'd sleep under a stack of quilts, about like that, that my grandma and my great aunt and my mom made. I thought it was great life, though, but I understand the pressure that inflation puts on lower-income people and elderly people. And the increase in energy costs is really gonna be harmful to the health of a lot of people. There's, according to the British Medical Journal, Lancet, there's seventeen times more people die from cold-related illnesses from living in homes that are not warm enough than from heat, and it's particularly problematic for people with cardio and respiratory illnesses. So I really think that we've made some bad decisions on energy policy, that not only you're gonna impact our economy, it's gonna impact the ability of people to keep their homes adequately heated and cooled in the summer. It's gonna impact the cost. It's going to impact the cost of food. Energy is the most inflationary part of our commodity in our entire economy because there's an energy cost in everything, from harvesting of, from the planting of crops to harvesting, to the extracting of minerals, the refinement, the processing, the manufacturing. There's an energy cost that gets added to everything. So I think we've taken a step backwards by not completing the Keystone Pipeline. That was, that would have been an additional 10,000 jobs and billions of dollars in economic impact, but it's also created a major geopolitical issue because with the approval of the Nord Stream 2 pipeline that Russia's building, 30% of Russia's economy is energy, and they're using their energy revenues to modernize and expand their military and to project power. This, by us shutting down our oil and gas exploration on federal lands and offshore, it's limited our ability to provide natural gas particularly, and oil, to the Eastern European countries who want nothing to do with Russia. We're already selling electrified natural gas to Poland and Lithuania. I've been to Lithuania and the Republic of Georgia and Romania. I've had conversations with the ambassador from Hungary. They want to buy our natural gas, and they will pay more for it. And by the way, in terms of emissions, U.S. gas is 40% cleaner than the Russian gas. This also impacts Iran. So we've got some issues that I think we've got to put aside the partisanship and come together because it's for our own national security. I believe that our energy resources are a national security issue. We do not want to be reliant on other countries for our energy, and we definitely need to do something about our reliance on China and India, for that matter, for key components for our, how many of you have a cell phone? Everybody in here, I see some of you recording this. Those don't operate without rare earth minerals. 80% of our rare earth materials come from China. Our fighter planes won't operate without rare materials. The other 20% are also foreign sourced. In terms of our medicine and health material, you remember when COVID first hit, the panic over not having enough masks and personal protective equipment? It's because it's sourced from China. Our medicines, we had the kits to do the COVID test, but we didn't have the reagent that you had to have to complete the test, it's because it's all foreign sourced. Most of the components from our medicine come from India. 70% of the microchips, have anybody tried to buy a car lately or a new washing machine? The microchips, 70% of our microchips come from Taiwan, and I am worried sick that China's going to invade Taiwan. So on that happy note, I will stop here and entertain your questions, if you have questions. Somebody's got to be first. Yes, sir.
Congressman, did I understand you say that you could vote on the infrastructure bill next Tuesday?
That's what the Majority Leader of the Democrats, Steny Horringer, said. That was the information we got around lunchtime. This afternoon, I think it changed, so I don't know.
Is that something that you would be so with that?
Probably not. They've loaded up so much stuff, and it's going to the Rules Committee Monday. They, around lunch, they're saying we were going to vote on the rule. What happens when you bring a bill to the House from the Senate or out of committee, it goes to our Rules Committee. And last Congress, I was on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, and for the first time in my memory, and I did a lot of work in D.C. for 20-something years with the think tank that I ran, I'd never seen a transportation infrastructure bill come out of committee where one party, not a single member voted for until the last Congress. And it was 600-something billion dollars that went to the Rules Committee, they added a trillion dollars to a 600-something billion dollar bill, and when it came before, not a single Republican voted for it. And that's my concern with this right now because I just told you that our debt is already 2% greater than the entire economy. I want that to sink in, what that means. By the end of this year, it could be 7% to 10% bigger. At the rate we're going in another 25 years, it'll be 30% bigger than our entire economy. That's going to impact everybody in this room. It's also leading us to a point where I think we're going to lose the dollar as the world's reserve currency, and if that happens, we're really up the creek. And China's working every day to undermine our dollar. There's, how many of you have heard of the International Monetary Fund? Back in the 70s or early 80s, they set up a program called Special Drawing Rights. And what that means is that if you're heading up, if you're a nation and you need a loan, you can go to the International Monetary Fund and get money from the Special Drawing Rights Fund. And it consisted of four currencies: the U.S. dollar, the euro, the Japanese yen, and the British pound sterling. Well, the Chinese have put so much pressure on the International Monetary Fund that they've now included the Chinese yuan or renminbi, that's their national currency. If you're thinking about investing in foreign currency, I would advise you not to invest in Chinese currency. And the reason is, is the value of the currency is not set by the market. U.S. dollar value goes up and down based on inflation and other market activities, but the Chinese currency, the value is set by the government, it's whatever they say it is. And what China's trying to do, and there are other people in other countries trying to basically make that Special Drawing Rights account a form of reserve currency, it would include the dollar, but it would significantly diminish the dollar and increase our borrowing costs. Right now, if all of these things pass, Joe, combined with the other spending, over the next 10 years, it's $68 trillion. Right now, our debt is serviced, is either the third or fourth largest part of our outlays, Social Security and Medicare being the top two. It's, our debt is going to run up the interest payments to the point that I don't know that we can service our debt. And I've asked Steve Moore, who's an economist, if he could give me some estimate of what he thinks the interest is going to be on that, and I'm waiting to hear back from him. Yes, sir.
Right now, the 30-year Treasury is running around 1.6%. If the debt increases to the point that we have to raise interest rates to attract bond buyers to, let's say, 2%, take it to 3.6%, how much money is that going to cost us over what we pay now in our debt?
That's part of what I'm trying to, are you Brandon?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought so. That's what I'm trying to find out, and that's what I've asked Steve Moore to give me an idea, because I've also asked him to talk about how this impacts the dollar as well as what our interest payment's going to be. And one of the things that's going on, and it's really hurt a lot of elderly people on fixed incomes, because so many of them are not in the market, the stock market they're in, interest-bearing accounts, because the interest rates have been so low, their inflation has vastly exceeded the income they're receiving from whatever investment instrument they Yes, sir.
Who is the real Joe Manchin? Is he just a chameleon, or does he really have convictions on certain things, or he just seems to fascinate someone?
You know, I really don't know Senator Manchin that well. I've been around him a few times. He's the one that told me that nobody in West Virginia calls Nick Saban Nick, that everybody calls him Brother. Yeah, but I don't know. He's in an interesting position in that state that is one of the most Republican states in the country. I do, he has made a commitment that he will not vote to eliminate the filibuster. I pray that he keeps that commitment. I think he and Kirsten Sinema from Arizona are a key to whether or not that 3.5 trillion gets through. If that does, it will be one of the most transformative things that's ever happened in the country, and I don't know that we'll ever recover from it because it is so broad-ranging and so expensive. And I'm hoping that he'll hold the line because one of them's going to have to vote no because they're going to do this through reconciliation, which means it's not subject to being filibustered, and it can pass with a simple majority of a core in present. One vote's going to determine, literally determine, the future of the country. Any other?
One more question. This trust that we have with our international partners, it's now on shaky ground. Does the party in charge, power, have any difference in their mind, or is the U.S. just the U.S.?
I think this will fall heavily on the Biden administration. I don't know that they look at the whole country and think everybody in this room is not trustworthy. And so I think it, that's, and I know that sounds like a partisan statement, but if you don't, if you don't understand this, just watch CNN. I mean, who, they've been all-in for Biden administration for the first seven months of his administration until this. And I, when I got up yesterday morning, I work out every morning, I was, I watched CNN, I watched Morning Joe, and everybody understands that this was an enormous failure by the administration, and it starts with the Intelligence Committee, which I really don't understand, Mr. Vick, because I'm not on the Intel Committee, I'm not on Foreign Affairs, I'm not on Armed Services, but a lot of us knew, based on the information we were getting, that Kabul was in danger of falling within a matter of weeks, not months, like they thought. They thought this was going to be a, an organized transition. We all understood that the Taliban would basically run Afghanistan. And the thing that I think a lot of us, a lot of people don't understand is, they see Afghanistan on the map as one nation, but it's not, it's really not a nation. It's a conglomeration of tribes and provinces. And there's never been an army in the history of the world that's conquered Afghanistan because as a nation, Afghanistan really is just a name on a map. Alexander the Great, all the way up to the Russians and now us. And what we've been able to do in the 20 years we've been there is maintain some semblance of organization that kept the provinces and the tribes somewhat together, but not totally. And it's one of the most corrupt countries you'll ever go to, and I doubt seriously you'll be going there anytime soon. And a lot of what we did was force, but also paying off people, just to be brutally honest. And that's, that's the last three administrations. That's not just on Joe Biden, that's on everybody. And that's, that's kind of how it worked. And the thing about this idea that the Afghan forces wouldn't fight is, like I said, it's totally false, they would fight. But this idea that we're not going to fight forever wars, well, that's true in a sense, but we weren't, we weren't in the midst of a major war. There were skirmishes, there were bombings and things like that. But if you want to look at how this could have worked, you don't change a culture that's thousands of years old in 20 years. And look at South Korea. If we had decided in 1973, 20 years after the end of the Korean War, to get out of Korea, what, how do you think that would have turned out? China, there'd be one Korea, it'd be like North Korea, and China would be running the show, like they do now in North Korea. The Korean government at that time was a virtual dictatorship, they were as corrupt as any government you've ever seen. The people finally got fed up, they arrested the president at that time, he, put him in prison, and elected a truly democratic government. And if you go to Korea today, if you go to Seoul, it's one of the most modern cities in the world. But it took almost 70 years to get there. Well, it took 60 years to get there. If we had left Western Europe in 19, at the end of 1945, I think Western Europe would look a lot different than it does today, the Soviet Union would probably still be intact. But we stayed, and we're still there as a blocking force against what was Soviet aggression is now Russian aggression. So there are ways, I think, to do this, but we're an incredibly impatient people. We want, we want everything right now. But we're dealing with people who are incredibly patient, particularly the Chinese. I want to encourage all of you to read a book, it's called The 100 Year Marathon. The 100 Year Marathon is written by one of, maybe the top CIA analysts, 40 years in the CIA, a guy named Michael Pillsbury. It's one of the most enlightening books you'll ever read about what China's really about and how they think. And if I, if I thought about it, I could put it up on the screen, I've got a picture of the globe in 20, in the year 2000, and it shows you a bunch of nations in blue that were all nations where the U.S. was their primary trading partner. It was over 2/3 of the nations. In 2020, it's flipped, including South America. There are only four countries in South America that, where we're still their primary trading partner. One of China's greatest fears is being surrounded, yet for the last 20 years, they've been working day and night to surround us. And they, they've done it through a thing called the Belt and Road Initiative, and it was, it's not their ambition to be the world's greatest economic power, it is their ambition to dominate the world, all things under heaven. You'll see that in this book. There's another one by a guy named Joe Rogan called Chaos Under Heaven. China intends to dominate the world by 2049. That was Mao's vision, and Xi Jinping believes that he is the anointed one to complete that vision. Yes, sir.
Two questions for my, I'll ask my first one based off what you just said. So I've heard that, I've heard this sentiment about China a lot. Is America gearing up towards some conflict with China in the U.S.?
We are prepared to defend the country, but we're behind in some key areas. China has militarized space, they violated international treaties in that regard. So it's made us vulnerable to losing our communication systems. We are taking, we have taken action to prevent that. But if we lose our satellites, they make us blind and deaf. China's ahead of us in cyber warfare, asymmetrical warfare. They're ahead of us in artificial intelligence. They're ahead of us in hypersonic weapons. China, and everything that I've just said, where they're ahead of us, they have stolen most of that technology from us. I mean, we are, it's unbelievable how dumb we've been, and I'm talking Republican and Democratic administrations, in allowing this to take place, it's criminal almost. So we're catching up. We're building hypersonic weapons, they're actually being built in Huntsville. We're securing critical infrastructure to protect ourselves. Now, that's the bad news. The good news is China doesn't have the ability to project power like we do. They don't, they've got one carrier task force that's pretty much operational in the South China Sea, and part of that's because they've built those islands, militarized those islands, and their intent, and from my analysis, is they want access to the minerals. They're also very active in the Arctic for extracting the oil, natural gas. China has to import, I want to say 60-something percent of their oil and 40-something percent of their gas. So they don't have that, that ability. They've developed some very capable fighter aircraft, again, with technology that they stole from us. But we have that advantage. They've got twice as many naval vessels as we do, but they don't have the, a forced posture to project power. Now, my concern about all of these nations that have taken money from China and has allowed China to come in and build this Belt and Road Initiative, China's building deep-water seaports, they're building- China's building deepwater seaports, they're building airports and rail systems. And my concern is they're building that so if they were to get in a conflict, they have got the facilities in place to advance their military forces. They're even trying to, they're putting pressure on the president of El Salvador to put a facility on the coast of El Salvador, which so far, they're not doing that. And you had another question? By the way, I liked your shirt, I gave you a thumbs up on that.
Thank you. So I know you served on the Reform and Oversight Committee, so I know you can appreciate the investigation. I have a question. I know you voted no on the House feels to establish an independent commission on the January 6, 2021 insurrection. Can you talk a little bit more about that decision?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. First of all, there've been multiple investigations already, including from the Senate. And, and we've empowered the Arctic or the Capitol to do the same thing. And so it was pointless to have a commission to do this. In my opinion, it was all politics, in particular because the chairman of the commission, Benny Thompson, has made Speaker Pelosi off limits. I spoke about this on a talk radio show, Rick and Bubba, but one of their listeners came back and said, "I misrepresented the fact that Sergeant at Arms and the Capitol Police report to the speaker." The fact of the matter is, under federal code, and I sent them the code, they report to the speaker. The Sergeant at Arms in the Senate reports to the Majority Leader. And we know that in the middle of December, they had actionable intelligence. The head of the Capitol Police Intelligence Unit had actionable intelligence. And the questions that we need to be asking is whether or not that intelligence made its way up to the speaker. Because what, what we were told was that there was a stand-down order, that they didn't want the optics of having the National Guard on, at the Capitol, or utilizing the Washington DC police, the Metro police. They were all available. They had over 2,000 members of the National Guard available, but they weren't called out. They also didn't equip the Capitol Police with what you normally would have in terms of riot gear. They didn't have the shields, they didn't have the helmets, the face masks. The bear, they have barriers that they can put up to limit access to certain areas. They didn't, they didn't put that out. As a matter of fact, there's a chain barrier that's, when you go up the steps of the Capitol, I like to go outside, so I go outside and I walk up those steps. You go up one flight, there's a flat area, and then the next flight. That first flat area has stanchions and chains there with signs that say, "Members Only." Those were all taken down a couple of weeks before this all happened. There's a lot of questions that I think needed to be answered that we're not gonna get an opportunity to ask because the person that we need to be talked to has been made off limits. So my conclusion, my judgment, is this is all political. I want to get to the bottom of it. I actually had an email and additional information about what was going on, but there was a group of people that I consider anarchists that they were told to gather in Lincoln Park at 6:30 of the morning of the 6th. They were told to bring their helmets, their shields, so many, I think like three liters of water, enough meals ready to eat for a couple of days, and how to get their weapons through Virginia and Maryland at this gathering place. And if you saw any of the videos, you saw people with scaling, wall scaling materials. This was planned, and the FBI had intelligence that was passed on, that didn't get acted on. In the morning of the 6th, I had to leave, I was in a meeting in the Rayburn House Office Building, I'm in the Cannon Building, and I had to go off campus. And when I got to the corner of First Street and C Street, I saw a US Marshal walk by, and I looked down the street, and there were all these police vehicles. At 9:30 that morning, they had found a pipe bomb. And for the life of me, I don't understand why we didn't reinforce the Capitol Police and bring in the National Guard. This, this was a real bomb. And, and I haven't verified this, but I was also told that there were, there was another one over by the Capitol near where the power generation units sit. So I'm just not interested in a political commission. I wanna get to the bottom of it. And I think the people, I've told everybody that's asked me, if people went into the Capitol, they committed a crime, they need to answer for it. This put a lot of people in danger. I understand the right to protest, I understand the right to peaceably assemble. I understand the right to redress grievances to the government, but I also understand the rule of law. You know, there's some people that say, "Well, we didn't know that." Well, maybe not, but those of you who had, you know, metal bats and stuff trying to break out the windows, that's, that's a little bit of a different deal. Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Paul, I'd like to talk a little bit about our current energy policy because that's really what I'm hearing a lot from our constituents. And I also see it here as a council member, our energy costs continue to go up for the services that we provide. We have, you were right, we have elderly and the poor, that they're having to make decisions on what they're going to pay because they're on fixed incomes. And this is really impacting, the decisions that are made in Washington are impacting our local communities. And I'm wondering if there's anything that we can do to get word back to Washington, please, change your energy policies that you put in because they're having terrible, a terrible impact on everyone in local communities throughout here in Arndale. And I hear it from other parts too, where people are really struggling. The price of the pump is high. And it wasn't that way, you know, seven months ago, eight months ago, our gas prices were a lot more easier to work with. Our energy costs were not as high as they are for their utility bills because they all use power, they all use energy. So what is it that we can do to get that message back to Washington?
Well, you just did, and I'm taking that message back. I've been making this point to people. This impacts us in so many ways. Like I said, I grew up in Hackleburg, Alabama, tiny little town. And, and we got, we used to have textile facilities here. Russell Athletic was in Alex City. My mom worked at the Blue Bell Factory in Hackleburg. Fort Payne was the sock capital of the world. North Carolina was the furniture capital of the world. We've lost all of that because it all moved offshore. And a lot of it moved to China. They're on the verge of taking over the kitchen cabinet business. I think we've only got two companies left. Now, how does this connect to energy? We lost them because we became uncompetitive. We had one of the highest, if not the highest, corporate income tax rates in the world. And I'll give you an example of this. Under our law, if 25% of your company is foreign-owned, you can locate your headquarters in that country and be subject to their tax rates. Horizon Pharmaceutical out of Chicago bought an Irish pharmaceutical company, and I think paid maybe 20, 25% more than what the company was worth so they could move their office to Ireland because Ireland's corporate income tax rate was 12 and a half percent. So we, that's, that's the first thing, how it impacted people like I grew up with, losing their jobs. And that's why a lot of people have left rural communities and moved to more urban areas, which is really sad to me because, you know, being a country boy, that's a great life. So what happened with the fracking revolution? All of a sudden, we went from being energy-dependent and having to depend on the prices set by OPEC to having more oil and natural gas than we will ever consume. There's one formation out West called the Green River Formation that contains over 3 trillion barrels of recoverable oil. That's three times what the entire world's used in the last 100 years. In 2015, or 2014, there was a study, I think from Harvard and the Boston Globe, that showed that because of the dramatic decrease in natural gas prices, we got within 5% of the Chinese in manufacturing cost. It was because of the lower energy cost and greater productivity. And we started to see some of this come back. When we passed the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, you really saw it coming back. It made us competitive again. Now our energy costs are going up. So it's gonna hurt people on fixed incomes and low-income people because they've got, they've gotta put gas in their cars and trucks to get to work. They use, a lot of them use them for work. They gotta keep their homes heated and cooled. And again, it's gonna impact everything you buy. There's gonna be an energy cost in it. Plus, I'm afraid we're gonna start seeing manufacturing leave us again. Natural gas went from about $15 per million BTU to, it hit $2 last year. That's how significant this has been for us. And I'm really concerned, and particularly how it impacts people's health. And all this stuff that I'm telling you, you can look it up, it's documented. I'm reading a book right now called Unsettled. It's written by Stephen Koonen, who's a physicist, taught at Stanford, but he was President Obama's climate czar. And he talks about the bad decisions that we're making right now. Bjorn Lomborg wrote a book called False Alarm. Time Magazine ranks him as one of the 100 most influential people in the world. He's Swedish, same thing. And how, to give you an idea of how convoluted all this is, there's a town in Illinois, Pembroke Township, 2,100 people. 85% of them are African-American, and they don't have access to natural gas. They're heating their homes with coal or wood burning stoves or propane. The Reverend Jesse Jackson and Al Sharpton and some of the other civil rights leaders are working now to try to get a natural gas pipeline into Pembroke Heights. But I can't get my colleagues across the aisle to support it. I bet I, if I've asked once, I've asked half a dozen times in committee, will they support helping these people get natural gas for their homes? This, it's just... And I know people are concerned about climate change, and I wanna tell you, the climate is changing. But it's changing as a result of natural variations, things that we can't do anything about. We had a hearing in the Select Committee, and we brought in three of the Democrat witnesses, were three top climate scientists, including a British scientist who was one of the principal authors and principal editors of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change's fifth report. And I asked him this question. If the United States completely eliminated all of its carbon dioxide emissions, would it stop climate change? If we went to absolute zero, would it stop climate change? And the answer from those three scientists who were Democrat witnesses was no. If the entire world completely eliminated all of its carbon dioxide emissions, went to absolute zero, which means we're not breathing, by the way, went to absolute zero, would it stop climate change? And the answer again is no. CO2 is, of the atmospheric gases, is the smallest percentage of all of them. It's like 4/100 of a percent. The single largest natural greenhouse gas is water vapor. Methane is problematic. But what, what we're doing right now, and you may not know this, but down in Wilsonville, we have the National Center for Carbon Capture. They're capturing carbon at the, at the source and converting it into a form that we can either sequester in the ground, or in their case, they're sequestering it into usable products like a concrete block. At MIT, they've developed technology to convert methane into material that can, is a preliminary for fuel, for plastics, or for pharmaceuticals. In terms of emissions, people think the United States is the single biggest emitter of greenhouse gases. Even though we withdrew from the Paris Accords, our emissions have gone down below the level that we were committed to when we were in the accord. And in terms of the entire world, we emit 11% of the total greenhouse gases, CO2 specifically. India emits 13%, China emits 33%, and they're building a coal-fired power plant about every two weeks. They have no intention. 25% of the atmospheric pollution over California originated in China, came over in the jet stream. So what is causing climate change? We're dealing right now with an El Nino in the Pacific Ocean, and we're finding out, in this latest report, I haven't had a chance to read it, it just came out from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, is making the point that if we completely eliminate all the CO2 emissions, it's not gonna stop what's already happening. You've got ocean currents, the North Atlantic oscillations, but you've also got some major issues with solar activity. How many of you have ever looked at a compass? A compass does not point geographically to a point north, it points to magnetic north. And magnetic north is shifting eastward at about 30 to 40 miles a year. It's going at such a rate that some airports, if you've ever noticed when you're taxiing out to the runway, there's these signs that have numbers and letters. Those are logistical markers. All of our logistics are oriented toward magnetic north. They're having to recalibrate that. And as the magnetic poles shift, it changes how the magnetic shield forces protect the Earth from cosmic rays and cosmic particles, which impact wind patterns. You've heard about the droughts in California and how bad they are. But the most severe droughts that have ever been recorded occurred between 850 AD and 1400 AD. That's why the Indian tribe, the Anasas, disappeared. That's why the Pueblo civilization basically assimilated into other indigenous tribes. Same thing happened with the Mississippian culture, the mound dwellers that we saw, is because of climate change. You know, almost all of Alabama at one time was part of a shallow sea, all of Florida, most of Louisiana, half, a third to half of Texas. All of that's climate change. One of my favorite questions to ask is, has the Sahara always been a desert? How many thinks the Sahara's always been a desert? Obviously, it's a setup question, the answer's no. But the follow-up question is, how long has it been a desert? About 5,500 years, 25,000, 5,500 years. Well, if it's only been a desert about 5,500 years, what caused it? The scientific explanation is that the Earth, about 10,000 or 11,000 years ago, shifted its tilt on its axis. It changed how sunlight and other atmospheric things from space struck the Earth impacted the wind patterns. And over about a 10,000-year period, the Sahara, which had been inhabited by the Nubians and the Egyptians, they had grasslands, they had streams, they had woodlands, became a desert. So what do we do? My biggest concern about climate change is what we're not doing to prepare for the climate change that we can't do anything about. We have the technological ability and the engineering capability to adapt and mitigate for much of what's coming. And one of my biggest concerns is what's going on in terms of solar activity right now, in particular, the probability of a coronal mass ejection. Let's look that up. In 1859, the most severe coronal mass ejection, and this occurs because of solar storms on the sun, is their magnetic pole shift. And it literally shoots a burst of energy out from the sun. The most severe one to ever hit, that's ever been recorded, hit in 1859. It's called the Carrington Event, you can look it up. And it was so severe that it caused telegraph lines to catch on fire. We had another one, not as severe, in the 1920s, called the Mail Car Event. And then one in the 1980s that hit in Canada, and Quebec was without power province for about three days. But for years, they thought the probability of another Carrington-type event hitting the Earth was maybe one in 100, 150 years. Now they think it could be 2 to 12% in any given decade. Now they think it could be 2 to 12% in any given decade. Now, I don't know how many of you have been vaccinated, but if anybody told you, "Well, there's a 2 to 12% chance that by the time you hit the car, you're going to drop dead from vaccination," the vaccination numbers would be even lower. Lloyds of London has done a paper, and you can look this up, estimating what the impact would be if we had a Carrington-level event. And they estimate that somewhere in the range of 30 million people in the United States would be without power from a few weeks to two years. We'd never recover from that. So I take the science seriously. I try to cut the politics out of it, and I think we've got to get to a point where we deal with what it is and not what somebody thinks it is. So it's 7 o'clock, actually a little after 7:00. I appreciate all of you being here tonight. Getting to know Mayor Stewart, I'm impressed with him, and I, I think you've got good leadership in, in Arundel, and I look forward to working with you.
Hey, can I just want to comment about the, you know, a lot of the hospital in the rural, you're a country boy, I'm a country boy too.
Where'd you grow up?
Mississippi. You know, I slop hogs.
The whole state's country.
Look, the place I, I was born, you have to pump life into it, so that's, that's country. So slop hogs and everything. But the hospitals in the rural areas have been shut down in a lot of country towns in Alabama. What are you doing to try to get those reopened?
Well, I, I can't do it for the whole state, but we've been very involved down in Centerville with, with the Bibb County Medical Center down there. And I have talked about it in Congress, model for the rest of the country, because they not only have a hospital, they have dental care, they've got eye care, they've got assisted living, they've got independent living. They've created a little economy around the hospital, and I think that's what will make a rural hospital work. The other thing that we've got to have is broadband, and that's got to be part of any infrastructure package that we do, because telehealth is going to be a tremendous help to rural people who can't, can't drive two hours to get to a hospital in Birmingham. In Hackleburg, we had a clinic, and of course, we lost that. Unfortunately, it's now a funeral home. But the closest hospitals are either Russellville or Hamilton. So I, and, and my mom and dad, they're both dead now, but they lived, you know, practically their whole lives in that, that little town. And so I, I think we've got to get the broadband. And UAV has a program where if you, if you go through and become an intern as general practitioner, and you go to one of these rural hospitals, they will forgive your, your tuition. And so that's what's going on down now in, in Centerville. And if you haven't visited, you're on city council, right?
Yes, sir.
I'd encourage you to go down. Johnny Waits is the doctor who really heads that up. I, I probably knew Johnny when he was this tall. His dad, mom, dad are Tuscaloosa, his dad was a doctor. They've, they've done a great job with that. Thank y'all for coming.